Committee meeting of Akron City Council. I understand that we have three items that are, in fact, up for a public hearing today. Just to let everyone know, the rules are, in terms of the public hearings, what we will do is we will get a presentation from the planning department. We'll get a presentation from them. After that, what we'll do is we will ask for a report from Mr. Antonucci. Then we'll give you an opportunity to speak either in favor or against the proposal, okay? Then the committee will ask questions and/or counsel after that. And then this evening, we'll repeat that process. The only real difference is, is that we will make a recommendation, okay? To all of council, either to go forward and pass the item, to turn down the item, or to take time and refer the item. However, though, in both cases, this afternoon and this evening at seven o'clock, we will ask everyone who wishes to testify before the committee to please stand up and be sworn in by a representative of our law department. Who I hope there's somebody here to do that. From our law department, I don't see a lawyer here. We usually have the lawyers do that, they like to swear in people, that's their thing.
We're hunting for one now.
Can Shawn swear on the head?
Yes, we do have a lawyer, I don't know, that might, we may have to watch that because he may be voting on something here. Yeah, we need an attorney. I apologize for the delay. Okay, good. Thank you. You can swear?
Yeah. If you're going to speak at the public hearing, can you please stand and raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you give will be the truth? If so, please answer "I do." Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sarah, for that. At this time, I don't have an agenda in front of me, can I borrow this for a second? The first item that's up for a public hearing is ordinance authorizing a conditional use to establish a daycare business center at 1204 Coral Drive.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, committee members. Jasmine A. Robbins is requesting permission to establish a child daycare business center at this location. Proposed daycare business center, also known as the Robbins Nest, would be located on the ground floor and basement of the two-story, 1,920-square-foot colonial house. The facility would provide services and activities for up to 12 children, ranging from six weeks to 12 years of age. The daycare would be operational 24 hours a day, seven days a week. The petitioner has two adult children and her husband as employees. The corner lot property contains an enclosed rear yard. The petitioner stated that she's been operating a type B daycare, which is for six or less children, from this location since December of 2014. Many citywide daycares prefer to have a type A license because type B license is less flexible and does not meet their needs. Due to the flexible and varied scheduling needs of the children, proposed daycare business center should not significantly raise the level of activity on the property, nor have a detrimental effect on nearby homes. Providing quality daycare service is beneficial to the entire city, and as such, the planning staff and planning commission recommends approval, subject to conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Antonucci. At this time, we'll open it up. If there's anyone here wishing to speak in favor of the conditional use request for child daycare center business at 1204 Coral Drive, please come forward, if you could please provide for us your name and address. Those in favor. Can you guys hear, is it on? Is it on? Push the button.
Is that better?
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Jasmine A. Robbins, I live at 1204 Coral Drive. I'm here today in favor of the motion, obviously, and I would like to answer any questions or concerns that you all may have to address, Torsten.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else here wishing to speak in favor of the conditional use request at 1204 Coral Drive? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak against the proposal at 1204 Coral Drive? Anyone wishing to speak against? Very good. We'll close the public hearing. And now ask the committee if there's any questions from any of the committee members? Reference the conditional use request, any committee members? Is there any council members have any questions? Mr. Malick.
I just want to thank the applicant and speak in favor of the proposed use. I went out to her home a few weeks ago, and she was very welcoming and spent time answering questions. And as has been reflected by Mr. Antonucci, has operated a class B facility. And, you know, the only concern that I could see coming down the road is traffic, and we talked about that, and working with the neighbors if any issues arise. But I just want to thank her for her conscientiousness and how she's gone about this process.
Thank you very much. Mr. Swirsky?
Yeah, just a quick one to note. Thank you for recognizing the importance in our community and applying some initiative and entrepreneurial spirit to address that need, and good luck in that endeavor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions or comments? Very good. Invite you back this evening at seven o'clock.
Absolutely.
Again, we'll repeat the process, and the committee will make a recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for coming down, thank you. The next item that's up for a public hearing is authorizing conditional use to establish a child daycare business center at 1170 Diagonal. Mr. Antonucci?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, committee members. Deborah Okonow is requesting permission to establish a child daycare business center at this location. Proposed daycare business center, also known as Little Royals Palace, would mainly be located on the ground floor of the two-story, 1,500-square-foot colonial. The facility would provide services and activities for up to 12 children at a time, ranging from infants to 12 years of age. Daycare would be operated Monday through Friday, from 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. There will be no overnight stays. The petitioner plans on hiring one to two additional employees if approved. Property contains a rear yard, outdoor play area, and is fenced in the back. The petitioner stated that she currently operates a type B daycare. The children will be scattered throughout the day because some of the children will be part-time, full-time, or just after-school care. The proposed use should not be intrusive to the neighborhood as the outdoor play area is fenced, and the majority of the activities are conducted indoors. Providing quality daycare service is beneficial to the entire city. Both planning commission and planning staff recommend approval, subject to conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Antonucci. At this time, we'll open up the public hearing. Reference the conditional use request at 1170 Diagonal Road. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of the conditional use request? Anyone here wishing to speak in favor? 1170 Diagonal, anyone? Very good. Anyone wishing to speak against the proposed 1170 Diagonal? Anyone against? Anyone? Okay, very good, we'll close the public hearing at this time. And open up to any committee members that may have questions, reference 1170 Diagonal Road. Any council representatives? Any comments? Very good. Even though they're not here, we'll invite them back this evening. At this point, we'll move forward and move on to item number three. This is an additional conditional use request authorizing a conditional use to establish, to construct a discount store on the south side of North Case Avenue across from Bank Street, and declaring emergency. Mr. Antonucci?
Mr. Chairman, committee members. Franklin Land Associates LLC proposed to construct a discount store on this property. Since the proposed discount store is within 2,500 feet of another, conditional use is required. The one-story building would measure 70 feet by 130 feet, for 9,100 square feet of area. Building materials would consist of split-faced block along the front entrance and a portion of the west side of the building. The remainder of the building would comprise the vertical, pre-finished metal wall panels. Planning staff is not supportive of this proposal because the proposed location is within 2,500 feet of the Family Dollar at 19 North Arlington Street. Akron City Council recently passed ordinance 271-2019, which prohibits new discount stores if they are within 2,500 feet of an existing discount store. A discount store is defined by the City of Akron zoning code as "a store that sells a variety of inexpensive items, all or substantially, all of which are priced $5 or less," excluding a grocery store. This proposed store is roughly 1,400 feet from the 19 North Arlington Street store. Proposed, the purpose of this distance buffer was to prevent the oversaturation and concentration of such discount stores in neighborhoods within the city, which could result in limited availability of land for a healthy mix of retail uses, and the potential for vacancies. Akron currently has 32 discount stores. In comparison, Cleveland has 37 discount stores. This is as of August of 2019. There are numerous locations that the petitioner could locate a discount store in accordance with zoning code regulations, and both planning commission and planning staff recommend disapproval.
Thank you, Mr. Antonucci. At this time, we'll open up the public hearing. If there's anyone here wishing to speak in favor of the conditional use request for a discount store on the north side, or, excuse me, south side of North Case Avenue and across from Bank Street, if you could please provide for us your name and your address.
Hello, my name is Logan Trombley, I'm an attorney at the Law Office of Warner-Mendenhall. Our address is 190 North Union Street, Akron, Ohio. I'm here to represent the property owners who this building would be built on, going to be speaking in favor of the approval of the conditional use. I do have a couple sheets of paper I would like to distribute to the committee if possible. So what I've provided, as you'll see as it goes out, it's just a map, kind of a zoom-in map, just using Google Map and looking at what stuff is in this area, just so the committee can have a real idea of what we're talking about. The first, the first map is the North Case Avenue area. The one thing I want to point out is, first, this proposed location is a vacant lot. It's been a vacant lot for a long time. The property owners have done a lot of work to consolidate these lots under a single ownership so that it can be developed for the betterment of the area. If you also look at it, it's primarily, the immediate use around it is mostly manufacturing or industry, or light industry. It's not a heavy retail area, at least in the immediate area. So it's actually, any proposed retail development will be a driver of further retail development into this area, and this proposed discount store could be basically the bellwether of that, or the proposed bellwether. And so I think that's a specific, you know, just when we're thinking about the long-term future of the city and this area, this could be more of an opportunity to bring in follow-on businesses after this, to be the first one. If you look at the second page, it's kind of a zoom-out of that. And so if you want to kind of get an idea, the council, this ordinance that was passed, you know, I think the objective behind it was this idea about food deserts, and trying to prevent these grocery stores from being outcompeted by the discount stores, and then not having proper meals available for people in the community. So one you could see is that, on this map, there's a Dave's Market and Acme that kind of surround the Goodyear Heights neighborhood and Arlington Heights one. And so they have currently very well-established supermarkets that are providing this. These grocery, these discount stores don't necessarily compete in terms of what they're providing, so much with grocery stores who have such a wider selection. They'd really rather compete with CVSs and Walgreens, which I've also included on the map, that are also located in this area. So I think that's more the major threat. So I think that, in this specific area, although, you know, there is a valid concern about this food desert idea, I don't think it really makes sense in this particular area just because of the already established grocery stores providing food. And then also, where it's supposed to be is not in direct competition with something in the same plaza, it's actually going to be a bellwether to create new retail into an area. And the last thing I want to say is, this ordinance itself that was passed by city council does, it can't, the legal foundation of this ordinance is a little bit suspect in terms of, the case law in this area really prohibits the use of zoning ordinances to concern the question of economic rules of supply and demand. And so, you know, the planning commission, their big thing was, well, Akron has 32, Cleveland has 37 of these discount stores. But the supply and demand of uses is not really the proper way you're supposed to use this zoning ordinance, it could be argued to be unconstitutional. Furthermore, you're also not supposed to use zoning ordinances to regulate competition. So, you know, this, if the concern of this ordinance is about protecting grocery stores and preventing grocery stores from serving people and having the food deserts, then it really should be tailored to 2,500 feet from grocery stores, not discount stores. And the Dave's Market is above 2,500 feet away. There's no grocery stores next to it, in the immediate area of it. In the general area, there is, but there's always going to be general ones. So I just think that this, the ordinance itself, and I'm not sure what the legal department, if there's an analysis of the constitutionality of it has been done, but in terms of actually applying this ordinance, and in this specific situation, I think that the council and the committee should really take into effect the legal risk that's involved in applying in this situation due to the way that it was tailored. I don't think it was particularly tailored in a way that could pass constitutional muster. I could take any questions, or the property owners would be happy to answer any questions as well.
Okay, thank you for offering that. At this time, though, we'll continue the public hearing and ask if there's anyone here wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else here wishing to speak in favor? If you could please provide for us your name and address.
My name's Clark Grable, I didn't speak previously, but I'm from 2642 Pressler Road, down in Springfield Township, but I am one of the owners of the property there, which is titled in the Bennington Group, which has been in our family for quite some time. My sister and I, she's a part-owner, which has her own entity, and I have the Bennington Group. For the sale of the property, which has been vacant for numerous years, and the industrial area that it's in, there's a very large traffic count that goes through there. So I think it would be a benefit for a convenience store, or a dollar store, for the convenience of the neighborhood. And as spoken by council, the distance of this proposed location is over 3,100 feet from the supermarket. It's not within the 2,500 feet of the city ordinance. I do agree that it's within the 2,500 feet of the Family Dollar. But it is a distance away with the traffic count and the abandoned neighborhood, which there's really not much activity there, as far as commercial or sales, or industrial application at this time. We'd like to go forward and actually see that this land be used. And I think it would also be a driver, as council said, that there would be other retail things that would come into the neighborhood. It's a very depressed area, we have several of those in Summit County, and this is one that could really use some attention. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, thank you. Is there anyone else here wishing to speak in favor of this proposal of the conditional use?
My name is Velvet Grable, my address is 165 North Case Avenue, Akron, 44305. I'm also one of the owners of the property in question. The only thing that I would like to add to this whole discussion is the traffic patterns. Case Avenue has become one of the main thoroughfares from Talmadge Circle and coming down Eastland, and Newton going up over towards 91. It's a pretty busy corridor. Most people that are coming through there are using that as a quicker route to get to and from work. Most of the people that, from my opinion, that would be using or stopping at that convenience store, that dollar store, are not people that would normally be shopping at Dave's anyway, or would be driving out of the way, the way that the roads are laid out, to go to the Family Dollar that is on Arlington, but not directly on Market in Arlington. That store really kind of services that little nook over there between Bookdale and Market. A lot of the people that are using the other Family Dollar and that are using Dave's also do not have transportation. So I don't see that the authorizing of this dollar store to go in there would be a detriment to either of the other businesses. It would be more of a convenience for people that are using Case Avenue and Eastland and Britton, or Newton, as their thoroughfare to reach Market. And I would ask that the council would take into consideration the fact that this is one of the only businesses in the course of 20 years that has expressed an interest in starting to develop in that area. Outside of the little gas station that used to be there in the triangle point of Eastland and Newton that went out of business or closed up 15 years ago, or 19 years ago, there's been nobody in that area. And so, for the employees that do work at Carter, the few little businesses that we have in there, it would be a convenience and a boon for those employees also to be able to say, "Look, I want a soda, or I need to pick up a gallon of milk on my way home." And again, this is not an impact to Dave's and the other Family Dollar because that traffic pattern isn't going in that general area. And the last thing I would like to say is that I understand that because of the zoning law that has been passed, that they are asking for a conditional use, but the zoning on that land is proper for this type of a business. That property there is C1 to U6, heavy industrial. And it would be great to have somebody want to start to come in that area and develop it. And I thank you for your consideration on this matter.
Thank you. Anyone else here wishing to speak in favor of the conditional use request at the south side of Case Avenue, across from Bank Street? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone? Very good. Anyone wishing to speak against the proposal, conditional use request? Anyone against? Anyone? Very good. Open up for questions from the committee. Any committee members? Samples?
I have a question for the landowners. What kind of proposed discount store are we talking about?
Please, I'm sorry, if you could please go to the mic, yeah, we have to record this just in case there's a challenge.
My understanding is that it's going to be a dollar store. A Dollar General? A Dollar General.
Dollar General?
Dollar General, yes. Unlike the Dollar Tree where everything is a dollar, the Dollar General is a dollar and up based on the product that the individual needs.
So, and this is for the planning department? You said that there's another store within 2,500 feet. Are we talking about the Dollar General on North Arlington Street?
The Family Dollar that's on, over on Arlington, yeah. It's like 1,400 feet away. If you go like due west of this, as the crow flies, there's the Family Dollar right there.
Just north of Market and Arlington.
I know where it's at, I've been there before. I'm just, in my mind, I'm trying to walk it, and it seems like it's further than 1,400 feet.
No, it's 1,400, and I'll just remind the committee also that the main intent of this ordinance is to prevent the concentration of discount stores, and that it was put together by our very capable law department.
Yeah, I'm not questioning you guys' capability, I'm just, in my mind, I'm thinking, I lived on Newton Street, and I still travel that way, taking my grandkids to their other grandmother's house, and there's nothing down there at the bottom of that corridor. So I'm thinking to myself, I'm thinking about the other dollar store over on North Arlington Street, the people who live on Leland and Iroquois, who don't drive, who have to walk. Would they walk all the way over to North Arlington, or would they walk to the bottom of Newton Hill? Because there, a lot of them aren't using the other store on Newton Street, I know that for sure. It's not a store that people want to go to. So I just, because I know the neighborhood, I know Jeff knows the neighborhood, I know Sharon knows the neighborhood, I just know that quarter down there, it has been desolate for quite a long time since that Circle K left. Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions or comments from any committee members at this time? Any council representatives have any comments? Hearing none, very good. Again, we'll invite you back this evening at seven o'clock, and after the public hearing, we will make a recommendation to all of council. Thank you for coming. We'll now move on to the balance of the agenda. I'm going to request that we take time on four through and including five. And we do have an amendment. Mr. Clerk, I would be happy to read that in. I apologize, a substitute offered as an amendment, I believe?
Yeah, but you just need to refresh your iPads in order to pick up that amendment that you brought in.
I'm sorry, what?
You have to refresh your iPads.
Okay, very good.
So you can see what the change is.
Thank you. Yes, refresh your iPad is the message. So, because we do have, there was something that was added, I do believe, before this is just introduced. What this is, is adopting the 2020 Capital Investment Committee Development Program, legally referred to as the capital investment budget. We do have some changes and adjustments within this budget. After our discussions that we had over the last several weeks, line item by line item, I would also like to remind council that every issue, or every line item within this capital budget, we will see again, we will be revisiting those items, okay? Legislation will come in before monies are expended on any of these. So therefore, we are just looking at the capital budget. And I'm going to ask at this time if there's any questions or comments from any committee members? Any council members? Any questions or comments reference the capital budget? Very good. Saying, is there a recommendation for favorable report with suspension of the rules? Is there a second? Very good. All those in favor signify by saying aye? The ayes have it. Okay, we'll recommend favorable this evening with suspensions of the rules and a favorable report on that item, which is, I do believe, six. And then, after that, I'm going to recommend time on the balance short of any questions or comments. We'll now move on to the new list of legislation. Excuse me, I think I'm losing my voice or something here. That might be good for some of you. I believe item four is our first item. That under new legislation, we've addressed item number three. So four is ordinance accepting a vacation plat for Ewing Court, west of Adolf Street.
Oh, yeah, yes, this is accepting the plat for this Ewing Court, which is a small street that extends off of Adolf. All the property is, surrounding property is owned by Summa, and this would aid, this would assist Summa in future development. There's no city purpose for this small street, so we recommend approval of vacating.
Very good. I'd also like to ask the clerk if he could please add council representative samples to this as a co-sponsor?
This is number?
Five, four, I'm sorry. Actually, she would like her name on four and five, I do believe that they're both the same in terms of vacation. And I know there's some representatives here, I didn't know if you'd like to say anything or not. You're welcome to.
Ed Frito with Summa Health System. I work in the construction development group at the hospital. I'd be happy to answer any questions, but Ewing Court is just to, it connects four other properties together, one to the north and three or four to the south. And then, the second part was portions of Arch Street to continue the vacation south to Market. It's currently vacated north of Upson Street, and then a portion of Upson Street from Adams to Arch. And I'd review these with Ms. Samples a few months ago, and finally getting them before council.
Thank you. Thank you for coming down this afternoon. Questions or comments from any committee members? Any council representatives? Questions or comments? Is consent okay, or would you like suspension of the rules on this one?
Consent would be fine.
Consent is okay, is that okay with you, co-sponsor? Samples, consent, okay, good. Is there a recommendation for consent? Is there a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye? The ayes have it, very good, thank you. And the next item is five, accepting a vacation plat for Arch Street and portion of Upson, west of North Adams. Same explanation?
Yeah, same explanation, is this would allow Summa the ability to have some control over those, those streets, essentially would be private to surface. However, there would be a utility easement retained because there are utilities through there. So it would allow them circulation and control of those, of those streets.
Thank you, Mr. Antonucci. Any further questions or comments reference to this? It's attached to your legislation here, the map. So aside from that, is there a request for contention, or consent agenda? Is there a second? Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye? The ayes have it, thank you. Okay. Now we're going to go to six, which is the Now we're going to go to six, which is declaring certain improvements to real property located in the downtown area, redevelopment area to be a public purpose and exempt from real property taxation, providing for the collection of service payments in lieu of taxes and the deposit of those service payments in the appropriate fund, providing for the payment of a portion of the service payments to the Akron Public School District, all pursuant to ORS or C, I apologize, fifty-seven oh nine.
Thank you, Councilman Fusco. That's a long-winded way of saying we're doing tax agreement financing legislation today. This is for the Mayflower building.
Which one? I'm sorry?
For the Mayflower.
Thank you. God bless you.
This happens every time I get up here, I don't know. So the building was purchased by, or the city's in the chain of title in 2019. The current value of the Mayflower building is two-point-nine million dollars. Excuse me. The TIF will actually run in, at the same time as the housing tax abatement on the property. The owner is going to be putting in ten million dollars worth of renovations to the building in order to upgrade the residential units. If you have any questions? It's pretty cut and dry.
Mr. Swirsky? Do you have questions?
I don't have any questions. Well, I guess the question is, so could spell, you spell out for us the impact on the residents who are currently living there? Is a positive? They will be allowed to stay there?
Yes.
The rent prices will stay the same? Could you elaborate on that?
Sure. So the commitment of the developer remains the same as when we first brought this project to council in that no resident is going to be turned away, a current resident, in terms of their ability to stay. They're going to actually be phasing in the improvements, is my understanding, and so folks will not even be, will be moderately displaced as their units are being renovated. For anyone who's been in the Mayflower, the building itself is in dire need of improvement. We feel very confident in this particular ownership group and development group. They specialize in subsidized HUD-supported senior living. Now, not everyone there are seniors, so as units become available through either people moving on or choosing to go somewhere else, they will be marketing to the subsidized senior population. But again, no one who lives there now should be turned away or would have to leave the building permanently as a result of this development. And again, we were very clear about that from the beginning in terms of our support for the project, that downtown still remain open to anyone, including our residents of the Mayflower who have been there a long time.
That's excellent. That's excellent. This is in my ward, that's why I have a concern for it. I've been in there a number of times. I agree with you about the condition of the building. I would have one small request. It does have a historical connection to Alcoholics Anonymous, and that somehow, in some way, maybe you're already planning this, and I wouldn't put it past you to be doing that, but that we recognize the historical significance of the building. I'm not sure what the most appropriate way is, but does one of you want to talk about that, if you're already planning that?
Sure, and I could, I could share that when we did first make a connection with the redevelopers of the building, the new purchasers, that did come up, and they were very aware of the fact of its historic significance with regards to AA. So I believe that they're actually planning on doing something like a plaque or something to kind of commemorate that, but that's something we can definitely remind them of as we move forward on the project.
Great, that's great. Thank you. Is there a possibility for the, are the new owners, is there a possibility that they may be interested in providing some services on site for those residents that may benefit from something like that?
Yes, and I know that's something you worked on quite a bit, and that was something that was near and dear to us as well. So our understanding is that there are going to be a suite of services that will be provided for the tenants in the newly constructed, newly programmed building.
Very good. That's good news. Very good, thank you. And ten million is a significant investment in our downtown, without question. For the questions or comments? Short of that, is there, I'm sorry. Oh, yes, things from out.
For the service payments, what are the public improvements that are going to be, the service payments are going to be used for?
Right now, they'll, they'll most likely be involved in and around the project itself. So as it relates to any curbing or things that we're doing up on State Street and those types of things, then we have the alley behind it. So the public improvements, while not necessarily identified yet, will become apparent as part of the project scope, and it would be in and around that structure.
Thank you. And then also to Councilman Swirsky's point about the developers' commitment to maintain subsidized housing for the current residents, are those provisions tied into the development agreement such that if, you know, that they would lose the service payments if they, if they didn't follow through with those commitments?
Sure. So I don't believe it's necessarily in the development agreement, but they just re-upped with HUD for another fifty years, I believe, fifty? Twenty? But yeah, they just re-upped for another twenty years with HUD, so they have commitments to the federal government to maintain its subsidized standing. So we obviously feel strongly about it. Again, I don't know that we tied it to specifically in the development agreement because we felt that the commitment they made to HUD was, was strong enough.
Okay, thank you.
That, there's, there is a, an income stream there in terms of, you know, the agreement with the federal government that I assume that the developers would want to maintain and make sure. There's also an annual inspection that's conducted by the federal government to ensure that everything is up to date. So with that, what's the wishes here? Is there, is, pardon?
Consent is fine, there's no rush.
Consent agenda? Okay, good. I'll give everyone a little bit more time.
Sounds good.
There's a lot of moving parts reference this piece of legislation, so I'm going to entertain a motion for consent agenda.
Motion for consent.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Very good. Anything else come before the committee?
Mr. Fusco, real quick. I was given a note here that budget is meeting at three o'clock, and it's in regards to ordinances approving the wages and benefits for the fire department.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you for that announcement. I do apologize, I plum forgot about something that's on our agenda that we do need to discuss and address. One of my colleagues on this committee reminded me. I'm going to look for this. This would be, I do believe, the item number ten under the existing legislation, reference of, no, I'm sorry. That would be the petition. I believe we're going to go with, where's it at? Oh, seven? Ordinance authorizing conditional use to place an outdoor advertising display billboard at four-seventy-five East North Street and declaring emergency. Forgot about that one, I apologize. At this time, is there any questions from any committee members? This is, just to remind everyone, this would be the billboard that's proposed, conditional use proposal on four-seventy-five East North Street. However, though, it's, we had a public hearing on it a few weeks ago, there's been discussion, actually, the original public hearing was in 2019, and the petitioners did come back last week during our seven o'clock meeting and presented again to all of council. And so this has been before us on a couple of occasions. So short of that, is there any questions or comments at this time? Mr. Swirsky?
Well, I have a comment, which is, I think in that location, the place of sign of that size at that height would be big time ugly and intrusive.
Mr. Swirsky, can you talk a little bit into the mic? There you go.
Okay. Did you hear the first part? I didn't want to take you off. In that location, that size, that height of a sign would be serving big time ugly and intrusive. It's clearly not harmonious with the surrounding area. I think we need to be careful about the things that we approve. I think our citizens expect that of us, and I am totally opposed to this.
Okay, thank you. Further questions or comments? Ms. Samples?
Thank you. I have spoken with Mr. Hardy about this extensively, and this, to me, is bigger than just a billboard. I'm concerned about the small business owner down there and his viability, seeing that everyone around him has either been bought out or they vacated their properties, and he's a lone small business owner down there by himself. And I know this was helping him streamline some of his income, and because of that, I will probably abstain from the vote because I'm concerned about him. I'm concerned about how this is going to affect him. Thank you.
Any quest, any, just to let, apologies, yep. Any questions or comments from any committee members? Short of that, thank you. Mr. Hardy?
And just to let everyone know, and councilwoman Samples knows this, that our BRNE team will be making a business call to the, to the business to see if there's anything that we can do, as we would any other business, but specifically for him, to see how we can help the business owner with their day-to-day operations or whatever their plan is. We want to be helpful outside of this request.
Thank you. Is there any council representatives out here just to make a comment? Is that Mr. Neal? Mr. Neal, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Based on the conversation that has come from the, the business owner as well as the gentleman that wants to bring the sign, and they've, they've stated about the gaps in our present legislation, our ordinance. Is our law department confident that if this does go to court, that we're going to win? Or are we going to end up spending, spending money that we shouldn't necessarily have to spend?
I don't know if that has anything to do with the actual ordinance itself, but I understand and appreciate your question. However, though, from what I understand, we're confident, I can't answer for them, but that has really nothing to do with regards to the specific zoning conditional use request in terms of if they're confident or not they can defend it in court.
Well, the reason why I bring it up is because the petitioner stated that based on the way our ordinance is written.
That's an opinion probably from them, I would guess. This is specific to a conditional use request. That's what we should be discussing in committee right now. And you could probably, I would recommend, Mr. Neal, you write an email to our law director, and they can ask, they can answer if they feel they can defend this or not in court. However, though, this discussion here is only about the conditional use request, and that's it. That's the discussion.
I'd just like for it to be a part of the record. Since it was mentioned as part of the personal testimony of the petitioner.
I think it's on the record, yeah.
On behalf of this, for this council, so that we make the right decision.
You got it on the record. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Further questions or comments?
Is this on?
Yes.
May I recommend an adverse report?
Yes, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of an adverse report signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against?
Against.
Very good. You got that, Mr. Clerk?
You want to do a roll call here?
Is adverse report.
I got that.
Roll call, please.
Roll call. Fusco.
Aye.
Kammer. Swirsky.
Aye.
Baylor.
Sample.
Thank you. The report of the committee is adverse, and we will report such this evening. Short of that, we will now adjourn. Thank you.